All rise, hear ye, hear ye. Hamblin County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. We will now call our regular monthly meeting to order for April 20th, 2023. And to open this meeting, I'd like to call on Commissioner Hahn, if he would please, to lead us in prayer.
Mr. Spoh. Once again, dear heavenly Father, we come before you and we call upon you to guide our thoughts, our process. Father, we ask you to bring cool, progressive heads into this meeting, good decision-making, and to ask the question, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to do, dear God? And let us follow that, act upon it, and be responsible. Father, we ask you to be with, again, Wayne Neesmith, who is not here, he's still illing, his wife. We ask you to be with that whole family as they try to recover. Father, we ask now that you go with each of us during this meeting and after, and give us peace as we go forward. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Horner, would you please, sir, lead us in the place?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the rose, please.
Present. We will present.
All right, we have 13 present tonight. We do have a quorum, and we will begin our business. First item, we have nothing in the order of recognitions, and we will move straight into public comment. Kyle, would you please check the, sign in for us, please? Thank you, sir. in attendance that would like to speak to this commission. You still have the right to do so. We have a sign-in sheet that you have the opportunity to sign in and not have to deliver your address as you come, but you still have the opportunity to approach our podium and speak to this commission stating your name and your address. So if anyone, we'll start with those that have signed in. Ms. Noe, you're recognized.
Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road, I'd like to speak on a non-agenda item. It was on your agenda last month, or perhaps the month before, the Cherokee Boat Dock slip, the contract, and in particular, the indemnity clause. As you, I think, are aware, Mayor Britton came and proposed an amendment or tacking on some language to the indemnity clause, paragraph 12, that was in that contract. There was no mention of whether Mayor Britton talked to legal counsel, whether he talked to Mr. Capps, or whether he talked to anyone in coming up with that change, which still left the indemnity in place and limited it to the county's policy. Well, that's a huge coverage, huge. Plus, it would provide, I think the deductible, Mayor Britton can correct me if I'm wrong, is about $25,000. So if something were to happen, the county would be on the hook, potentially for up to $25,000, before our insurance would even pick up. But that's not the issue. The issue is, can you indemnify? Can the county indemnify Cherokee Boat Dock? And I don't think I have actually heard that answer, or I've seen any citation to any case or statute that allows the county to do that. So I hope that at some point in this meeting, whether it's now or whether it's at the end of the meeting, that will be addressed. Can you indemnify? And to what extent, if you can indemnify? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items? Non-agenda? Yes, sir, well, you're signed up for agenda items, I'm just making sure. Come right ahead.
My name's Dan Pellegrini, 290, we're, right. I was out of town the last three weeks, so I was just basically didn't want to let up on the noise or this. I didn't know where we at, but I just didn't want to basically fall by the wayside, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to non-agenda items on our calendar tonight? Seeing none, we will now move to item 2B regarding agenda items. Dan, you're listed first. Do you have anything else that you'd like to add? Ms. Noe, you're recognized.
Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road, I'd like to talk about item 9H, the pharmacy benefit management, SaveRx contract, and the infusion of $600,000 to the self-insurance fund. From what I understand, that, and please correct me again if I'm wrong, but I understand that it will be removed from your agenda, at least for this particular meeting. I think that epitomizes the problem with trying to rush contracts through. Five-day information when that contract has multiple parts, complicated, and involves, I would say, millions of dollars when you're talking about the county's insurance and service for employees. That never should have been considered for a five-day information.
That's not part of our agenda, ma'am. The five-day information is not.
It ties into this, don't interrupt me, it ties into this particular contract. So I would ask that you look at this and think again about what you were planning to do. You were planning on taking this, not at committee, you didn't have the contract. And then, if you got the information and the idea was to, oh, we got five days to review this, that's our rule. That's not enough for contracts. And there are very few contracts that require or lend themselves to five days to review them. You're spending taxpayers' money, lots of taxpayer money. I don't think you would do this with your own money, just say, oh, I just need to take a glance at that a few days before I sign the contract. So I wish you would take the county's money, the taxpayers' money, as seriously and consider going back to a rule that gives you 10 days to review contracts, such as the pharmacy contract and other contracts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak to the commission with agenda Seeing none, we will now move to nominations and appointments, and we do have one that we will be voting off the board. It's the Marsh Town Hamblin Library Board of Trustees, and Mayor Britton has submitted Commissioner Harville to fill in the, for Kristy Cowan, and be a new term beginning July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Also, to fill the unexpired term until June 30th, 2023, for Kristy Cowan. And also Amanda Hale, that will begin her first full term, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Horner. Now, let's vote this off the board, please.
Debbie Aher.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Thomas Doughty.
Aye.
Edna Green.
Yes.
Stan Harville.
Abstain.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Peggy Howell.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Aye.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith. Kyle Walker.
Aye.
It passed.
And that motion passes. They are approved. We'll now move into item 4, calendar rules. Committee Chairman, Mr. Doughty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we need a second. We do have a second. Yes, Ms. Green, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, Doughty, I'd like for you to pull the minutes for the March 23 meeting out to be looked at instead of them being accepted, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we, everybody catch that? Commissioner Green has asked that the March 20, 23 minutes be pulled from consent calendar for consideration, which automatically moves to our next item in number five. So we'll do that. Let me make a note, please. Anything else, Commissioner Green?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, so we will consent calendar now, approval of, go ahead.
As amended, then, item 4A, approval of the consent calendar items, with moving the approval of the minutes to item 5A, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we've got that second. Everybody, any more discussion? Let's vote this motion. Motion passes.
Item 4B is the approval of the regular calendar items. With the notation, we will be removing item 9H from the Finance Committee, which is the pharmacy benefit management to SaveRx and the infusion of $600,000 to self-insurance fund. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
The intent, or what I'm requesting, is the removal of the PBM contract. We still need the budget amendment for the $600,000 for the self-insurance fund.
Okay, so, let's get this correct.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I will amend my motion to approval of the regular calendar items with the removal of 9H, or partial removal of 9H, removing the pharmacy benefit management to SaveRx, but leaving the infusion of $600,000 to the self-insurance fund. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Do we have a, Mr. Walker, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yea, one nay.
That motion passes. All right, and we will now move to, that's all you got, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And now, order of the day, number five, items removed, consent calendar. We will now take up the minutes of the 2023, March 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion to accept? Okay, this is off the board because, so I'll need a motion to accept the minutes. It's off the board.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, all right, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, there we go. Now we can discuss. Did you get that? And Commissioner Green, you are recognized.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
The minutes from the last meeting, on page 186, were that you asked for the vote about taking the phone case out. It's incorrect. I do have it taped on my phone, if you need to listen to it, let me pass out what is...
It's not necessary, I understand. I read the minutes myself, I know what you're saying. But if anybody else does, you go right ahead.
Okay, hold tight. Mr. Harville, would you be kind enough to pass that around, please, sir? I'd like to see the minutes reflect exactly what was said. They do not say what the tape says, it is entirely different. If you will look at your paperwork, I have one at page 186 in the minutes, and it is wrong. I would like to see it corrected. First of all, it is illegal for anybody to tamper with the minutes. My understanding, the minutes went to the mayor's office, and they changed. It's illegal, and it just is not necessary. We need to be transparent and equitable in our dealings. I'd like for the minutes to reflect exactly what was said. I'm not blaming anybody, I just think it needs to be correct.
Okay, so, so what you're suggesting is you'd like to make amendment to the minutes as written, is that correct?
I would like to see the minutes amended to state exactly what you said, and that's on the second page.
We have a motion to amend the minutes. If we shall reflect, the motion was for the phone case to be removed to the rear of the room or put away. That was the actual request for vote, which ended up in 11, one voice vote. The intent was disruption throughout the evening, that was the word of the day, it seemed like. However, our mens reflect that it was disruptive. So therefore, commissioners, you have your choice of agreeing with an amendment, which she has an amendment. We need a second, and we can vote this amendment up and down, and then vote to accept the minutes as written, with the word disruption included. Is that correct? Have I stated that correctly?
I don't think so.
Yeah, you're right, ma'am.
I would like to see the minutes to the exact verbiage that you used, sir, and that's on page two.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do have it on tape, if anybody...
This commission can vote to accept the minutes as written, so...
Even though they're wrong, and even though they were changed after they went to the mayor's office, which is, excuse me, just a minute, may I finish, please, sir?
Well, you're stating something that's arbitrary. The intent of that vote was because of disruption, period. The intent of that vote was disruption. Even though the word was not included in the vote, I understand, but this commission has that authority to take that upon, and you have an amendment on the floor. Do we have a second to her amendment to strike the minutes in this phrase? Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
All right, we have a second. Now, Ms. Howell, you're recognized.
Well, I just, I remember that it was a, whatever you call it when you say the names, I did not vote in that particular.
Well, you, I gave you the opportunity, ma'am, to say no, and you did not. I understand that, and I apologize, but I did, in the recording, ask, is there anyone else that would say no?
Oh, okay. All right.
I mean, you can say your intent now, if that's what your intention is, I'm just, that's how that went, a voice vote, ask for all in favor, aye. Who else opposed? No, and I said, is there, are there any other notes?
I didn't say yea or nay, I just, sorry. Okay.
All right. Anyone else to speak to this amendment? Again, the amendment is that in the minutes, it states, I don't have the actual minutes in front of me.
Pass them on, please.
He has a copy of that, that's just an excerpt from it.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'll read it as is. Okay, this was the vote we took. By the minutes, it says the commission took a vote to remove the phone case held by Lyndon Noe to the back of the room because it is being disruptive to the meeting. Commissioner Green with the motion, and Commissioner Howell is saying that we need to strike disruptive because the actual recordings reflected, if I remember right, just the phone case be removed to the room, rear of the room, or put away. Now, let's vote this amendment to the minutes.
Debbie Aher.
No.
Chris Cutshaw.
No.
Thomas Doughty.
No.
Edna Green.
Yes.
Stan Harville.
No.
Bobby Hahn.
No.
Tim Horner.
No.
Joe Huntsman.
Abstained.
Peggy Howell.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
No.
Mike Reed.
No.
Mike Richardson.
No.
Kyle Walker.
No.
Okay, out of 13, we voted 11 to 2 that the amendment fails. Now we will move, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, that was 10 to 2.
I'm sorry, we had, yes, that was 10 to 2 with an abstention, my bad. That's correct, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
So the amendment fails, we will now vote on the minutes as presented with the word disruption, which I think was the intent. I think the clerks understood what was going on when they wrote that out, and arbitrary thought to think that the mayor changed that. Ready for a vote? We need a motion to accept the minutes as is.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
We have a second. Now let's vote this off the board because it is in item 5.
Debbie Aher.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Edna Green.
No.
Stan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn.
Yes.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Abstained.
Peggy Howell, no. Rodney Long. Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Should be 10 to, 10 to with one abstention, correct?
Yeah.
And the motion passes to accept the minutes as presented. We will now move to item number six, approval of consent calendar.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Just let them catch up here. We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar as presented? Yes, Ms. Green?
Chairman Cutshaw.
Yes, ma'am.
A vote of confidence doesn't make it right, sir. They should be precise and transparent, sir.
I think they were, ma'am, but...
It wasn't what the videotape said, sir.
The intent was there. I'm sorry you disagree with this commission.
Intent and verbiage is two different things, sir.
Excuse me?
Intent and verbiage is two different things.
You said your piece. Let's vote the motion, please.
Eleven yea, two nay.
Motion passes. We will now move to item seven, Justice Center Public Safety Chairman, Tim Horner. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 7A, the change order number 11, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on change order number 11? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yea, three nay.
That motion passes.
Item 7B, the Mosley Architects contract amendment, and I put that in the form of a motion also.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Just in last week, I sent out a revision to the proposed amendment and to a flat fee, converting it to a flat fee, and just wanted to clarify whether the motion is for the flat fee or for the 5.5% percentage. And I approached Mosley about negotiating for a flat fee in an effort to manage our cost on the project and try to get the fee a little lower than what we had been proposed. And so what we settled on was a flat fee, and instead of the 5.5% on whatever the project costs, plus a 1% on the security side as well. So I guess that's, I just want to verify for our purposes from administering it, is the motion for the initial proposal or the revision for the flat fee?
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion on this amendment to the Mosley contract? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've just got a little problem with it. I mean, we've got X amount of money, we've got what we have, and 5.5% of $1.2 million To make it to this $80,704 at the 5.5%, and I know there's the extra percent, would be $1.4 plus million to do this addition, and I don't know, I think certain things like this, we might need to go back to the Doe Jarvis way, as I hate to say it that, but this is X amount of money we got, and this is what you can spend when you do it. And, because we're just, we're hemorrhaging right now, in my opinion. It's just, it's going too much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Doughty, is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Eight yea, four nay, one abstain.
The motion passes.
So I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to the Audit Committee. Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized.
Thanks, sir. Item 8A, acceptance of the Hammond County Government Audit for Physical Year ending June 30th, 2022. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on our audit findings? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yea, zero nay, one abstain.
That motion passes. That motion passes. All right. Thank you, Chairman Hahn. All right. We'll now move into item nine, the Finance Committee. Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized, sir.
Item nine A, Resolution 2319, is a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to join the State of Tennessee and other local governments in amending the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement and improving the related settlement agreements. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item nine B, Resolution 2320, is a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to accept the contract for the Violent Crime Intervention Fund grant in the amount of 179,732. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Doughty, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not a question. This is just a thank you and a pat on the back to our Church Department. Those that have spent numerous months in here with us since this administration took over have seen the sheer volume of grants that they brought forth. It's extra work. They don't have extra staff. They're just stepping up and doing. And as of to this date, they have brought 474,000 plus just since September into aiding this county in providing what we need for services. And I just want to take this moment to say thank you and that we do appreciate the hard work that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Doughty. I will, I will agree. Thank you all for the work you're doing. Does anyone else have a discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine C, Resolution 2321, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to accept a state grant to establish mental health court. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Howe, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. I'm all about having this, but I'm wondering, do we have a program in the jail facility for, is, for some of our inmates who are having difficulty with? Good.
As far as a thorough mental health treatment program, no. I think the administration would agree with me. We don't have room to do anything like that, which the new facility will give us room to do that. We do have as part of our contract with the inmate medical provider, some hours for telehealth with a mental health provider.
Okay.
So, but it's, it's nothing that's, we can hang our hats on and that's not the right verbiage, but it's nothing thorough. You know, it's kind of on emergency.
If you, do we have anything like AA or anything that comes, is there anything that comes into our building that, the jail that can help?
Not that I'm aware of. We have, we have some, some church groups that come in and, but as far as AA, I'm not aware of that. We have the Jail to Work Program and, and that's the, the program that we have to address that. Now, part of the vision for when we move into the new building is to start drug treatment, mental health treatment while in, in the jail.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else need discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item nine D, Fiscal Agent Memorandum of Understanding Between Hamlin County Government and the Third Judicial District Recovery Court. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item nine E, Physical Year 23 Homeland Security Grant Application. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item nine L, Extension of Commercial Lease for County Clerk's Satellite Office. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine G, Extension of Lease with State of Tennessee for Judge Boniface's office. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine H, Infusion of 600,000 to Self Insurance Fund. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Howe?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, this will just finish us out for the year. Okay, and okay, we just gotta hope it'll do it.
Well, in the budget process, we'll
Okay.
That's, that's the next step, is to address the long-term plans for the planning of that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, when you gave this proposal at the committee meeting, you addressed that this would, would still have a buffer involved, that we should recover some, that it, we're not looking that it'll utilize this much. We just want to make sure that we've got it as our cushion.
The goal is to finish the year with at least 500,000. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on this item? If you recall, item nine H, we are voting for the infusion of 600,000 to our self-insurance fund. We have a motion. We have a second. Let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I, one, Hammond County Board of Education Budget Amendment Number Six and an increase of 435,000. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I two, Fund 101, Animal Control, 6,950. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. Uh, excuse me, excuse me. Commissioner Howe, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm glad they're, I'm mostly sort of glad they're getting that, this, this money. But we certainly do hear some complaints of dogs and animals out and about and on the loose and it remains a problem. And I guess we run out of room, too, when they take in so many, but I just hope we're doing the best we can on that because constituents will call from time to time about animals out and about and all we can do is refer them to the animal control. That's all I needed to say. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else with a discussion on this item? Let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I three, Fund 101, County Commission, 1,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I four, Fund 101, Mayor's, County Mayor, 3,600. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I five, Fund 101, County Trustees' Office, 3,620. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I six, Fund 101, Courtroom Security, 15,000. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I seven, Fund 101, Drug Court, 4,400. Put that in a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
The motion passes.
Item nine I I eight, Fund 101, Jail for 13,000. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I nine, Fund 101, Juvenile Court, 23,700. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Doughty, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to inform, I will be abstaining for cause because it's my wife's department and it deals with some payroll inside that area.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Anyone else with a discussion on this item? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay, one abstain.
Yes, that, and we'll call that unanimous on that one, but absolutely.
Item nine I I ten, Fund 101, Other Facilities, 10,800. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I eleven, Fund 101, Parks and Fair Boards, 24,105. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I twelve, Fund 101, Planning, 2,025. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I thirteen, Fund 101, Property Assessor's Office, 600. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I fourteen, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, 6,300. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Howe, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm wondering if, when we, do we have to wait for that Health Department and all that to be done before we can get cars moved over there instead of, I mean, the city, instead of moving them to the city?
We're, we're working on, on the, in Hamlin.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else with a discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I fifteen, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, 7,089. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I fifteen, Fund 101, Various Payroll Adjustments, 8,180. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I seventeen, Fund 116, Garbage Sanitation, 401,915.38. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Walker, you're recognized. So, this is for the purchase of the new automatic garbage? That is correct. Okay. That is correct. Okay. This is a budget amendment to, to set aside for that item. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I eighteen, Fund 101, General Fund, 453,818.18. I make that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item nine I I